Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to July 6th session of the Bellingham City Council. We have two, no, we only have one announcement. On Monday, July 27th, 2015, there will be a public hearing to develop recommendations on the 20-year population employment projections in urban growth area. The meeting will take place at 7:00 PM in the council chamber. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Teri Borneman.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here. Thank you, Elizabeth. Michael, could you get me the sign-up sheet? It's still in progress. Just go ahead and keep signing. We'll get to you. Okay. We'll go for the, the first name is Judy Collins.
Hi, I'm Judy Collins in 210 Horton Road. I'm not very smart. I didn't go to college. I was a dump truck driver for 27 years until I got breast cancer, and I hung in a couple years after that and gave it up, retired. So I know I've been trying to get water since '02, and all I get really is a bunch of run around. Three years ago, somebody whispered to me and said, "What you gotta do is go see the city council." So there I am. At that time, they said there was a lawsuit against the city. There was a guy out on Chuckanut that wanted water for a whole subdivision, and it was a lawsuit. So they said, "When it's settled, you'll probably get some water." Well, that didn't help either. Then they told me that if I could get the papers or prove that we would have been in the Meridian Water Association, that would grandfather me in so I could get water. Well, my girlfriend lived where Walmart is today, and she just happened to have a certificate and a letter from a lawyer proving that they had water, which is, was close to us. And I've got Mrs. Holland that lives at the corner of the Horton Road when I was growing up, and the meter, reader lady, later, she was a teenager then, she said she'd testify, and there's a couple others that were right neighbors that would testify. So I brought all that paperwork in. No, that's not enough either. So then I was told I was in Deer Creek Water Association. So I called Doug at Deer Wa, Deer Creek. Well, he says the, their water's down at Klein Road, and I'd have to put in a main up the guide to the Horton Road for me to get water. Well, the city already has a main. Does that make sense that we'd put in another main? So that didn't work out either, because well, I'm too far, and Deer Creek's not gonna give me any water. And then I was told that in '02 or '09 that I could've had water before y'all decided that you couldn't hook up to city water anymore or something. Well, how come I wasn't notified? If I was notified, I'd, believe me, I'd've had some water. So now I'm just, I go to the county and talk to them, and then I come and talk to you, and you're the people that can help me. And I know I gotta go to the county for their meetings, and I'll be there for their meetings, too. But UGA would get me started. It's at my fence line. The city limits sign is at my fence line, and the UGA is at my fence line. Just move it a few feet down the road a little bit, and I'll be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. The next three names are James, Don Rasmussen, and Yoshi Revell. Please try to keep it as three minutes. We have a lot of people signed up tonight, so be a little stricter.
Honorable Mayor, respected council members, and fellow citizens. My name is James. I am a citizen of Bellingham and Wackam County, a registered voter, a taxpayer, and a homeless combat veteran with nearly 15 years of experience in or with the homeless community. I have currently been in some form of homelessness since May 1st, 2010. The issue I wish to educate the city council and the public about is the systemic contributions to homelessness. The neighborhood I currently live in is in any safe place I could find to sleep in Bellingham or Wackam County. The core value which drives me to speak to how the system contributes to homelessness is objectivity. That and the fact that the system-sponsored film project, Homeless in Bellingham, is thus far ignoring and glossing over the systemic contributions to homelessness. The Wackam Homeless Service Director at the Opportunity Council says about the film project, "We set out to make something that was honest as possible." The Homeless in Bellingham Film Project will not be honest as possible for as long as it ignores the systemic contributions to homelessness. The specific issue is that in Bellingham and Wackam County, there is a severe, system-induced shortage of safe, clean housing that homeless citizens can obtain or afford. The lack of such housing is a direct contribution to the inability of many homeless citizens to get out of homelessness, to get stabilized, and to get in some form of self-sufficiency or assisted self-sufficiency. There are studies which indicate that homelessness costs a taxpayer one way or the other, and that housing, along with rubber-on services, is the more cost-effective way in dealing with homelessness rather than leaving citizens in the streets. Bellingham and Wackam County chooses not to provide the housing and services needed. This choice will likely cost taxpayers more in the long run, and it is a systemic contribution to homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Don Rasmussen, Yoshi Revell, and Jonathan Hopkins. Michael, can you hit the button?
Council, Mayor, and Community. My name's Don Rasmussen. I'm owner and president of Raz Construction, Inc. I operate at 4055 Hammer Drive in the Iron Gate Industrial Park, and I'll reemphasize "Industrial Park." Raz has an occupancy permit to operate out of Iron Gate. Raz has spent a considerable amount of money to operate out of a legal facility inside the city of Bellingham in terms of permitting, engineering, to meet the city's requirements. Today, the city of Bellingham staff is going to recommend an award to P&amp;P Excavating for bid number B-34B-215, which is Cordada Trail to Elementary. Raz sent a protest letter to the city regarding the three low bidders, P&amp;P Excavating, Iverson Earthworks, and Trimax, as all three of those contractors are operating out of a residential The city wrote back to Raz and said, quote, "It is not substantiated by any such findings issued by the county charged with enforcing such regulations." Now, I asked the council, how many members really think that you're allowed to operate a construction facility out of a residential neighborhood? You don't even need to look it up. But Chapter 20.84 of Wackam County says a home-based business, which is the only requirement that you're, meet the requirements to be a contractor, is not allowed to park multiple trucks, trailers, or excavators underneath a home-based business. So contractor cannot operate a home-based business legally even in Wackam County. The city and the county council continue to allow contractors to work in illegal areas, and they provide them, which provides an uncompetitive advantage to the contractors that are operating in a legal environment. This issue's been ignored for years, and the city is currently working with other contractors operating out of their homes, such as Award Excavating, Oceanside. The city staff says it would be inappropriate for the city to attempt to independently investigate or act on bare allegations. It took Raz Construction about five minutes to look up the addresses with Google Earth. And all of you right now have a smartphone, and you'd be able to look it up yourselves in five to 10 minutes and look and see the excavators, see the dump trucks that are in a residential neighborhood. Some of the other contractors that are currently operating, just to name a few, is Award, P&amp;P, Dirt Works, H.B. Hanson, and Iverson. The city can put a stop to this practice today by awarding to Raz Construction. But if they choose not to do that today...
Your time is up. Three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yoshi Revell, Jonathan Hopkins, and Chris Halterman.
Hello, my name is Yoshi. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of city council, and Madam Mayor, for your attention. If 1,000 people died here in Bellingham, I would think that we would be pretty alarmed. Recently, 1,000 people died in Pakistan because of excessive heat. Climate change is real, and it's already killing people, and we're asleep at the wheel. The ocean has gone from 8.26 to 8.12 in acidity. It's actually basic, but it's dropping towards acidity. Because pH is a logarithmic scale, that's a 30% increase in the acidity since the Industrial Revolution roughly 200 years. In geologic time, that's a lightning flash. We are getting strong warnings about climate change, ocean acidification, and what's happening to our planet. In case you haven't read, and the newspaper was talking about, we are now in what is considered the sixth mass extinction in Earth's history. Species are dying at roughly 100 times the normal rate. In the other five mass extinctions, they were all related to climate change-type events, except for one had a concurrent meteor strike. That was 65 million years ago that wiped the dinosaurs out. But they all had a climate change event where oceans were warming, there was acidity happening, there was added carbon dioxide in the air. We're looking at, in a not-too-distant future, a massive change in our weather, because climate is changing, and we have to do something about it. We're asleep at the wheel. And roughly, 2/3 of Americans are overweight or obese. This is a problem that's spreading all over the world. Approximately 11.3% of the Chinese population has diabetes, which is usually an overweight problem. Overconsumption is something that's spreading all over the world. We are literally creating our own graves. Nature does not give a second chance. The laws of physics do not give a second chance. If we don't start reducing our consumption and start reconnecting with the realities of nature, we're gonna pay a heavy price. Now, I've talked about the Venus Syndrome in here before, which is, we can reach, is a slim possibility of reaching tipping points where so much carbon dioxide gets in the air, and so much methane gas that is frozen on the ocean bottom gets into the air, it wipes out all life on the planet, Venus. It's a very, very slim possibility, but it's still within the realm of possibility. Much more likely is a mass extinction. There was, I believe it was the Triassic, there are bacteria in the ocean that were the first life 3.5 billion years ago. They live on sulfates instead of producing oxygen when they, when they make energy. Is that three minutes?
That's three minutes. Thank you, Yoshi. Anyways, thank you. Let's make some changes. Jonathan Hopkins, Chris Halterman, and Lori Province.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak to you today. I am Jonathan Hopkins, and I'm the operations manager for Uber here in Washington State, responsible for local markets throughout the state. We appreciate the interest of the council in regulating ride-sharing in a manner that provides more safe options for Bellingham residents. Operating in cities across the country, we're happy to discuss what we think are best practices for cities regarding background checks. At Uber, safety is our top priority. That is why we hope the council will support the general structure outlined in option three, which is quite simply a best practice. It is replicated in cities and states throughout the country, including Spokane and Vancouver, because it is both comprehensive and the most efficient to implement. If the council selects either options one or two, it would not be viable for Uber to launch in Bellingham despite our serious desire to do so. Uber uses a nationally accredited third-party background check provider that performs local, county, multi-state, and federal criminal background checks going back seven years to every potential driver. We also use a social security trace, cross-check the National Sex Offender Registry, and review DMV or Department of Licensing driving records. These background checks have been recognized and approved by governments across the country, represent a more comprehensive system than checks than those currently offered by BPD, and all the costs of which are borne by Uber. If we can bring this rider and driver experience to Bellingham, there's a lot of positive impact that we can do together. In cities in which we operate, we have partners who drive to pay the expenses of raising a family. We have others who are veterans just like me, making a living with Uber while they work their way through college. Yet others are self-employed entrepreneurs, creating their own business, and Uber's a reliable income source while they expand their operations or respond to seasonal changes. This impact is not just felt by drivers, it's felt by the community. Over 50% of Uber trips begin or end near a cluster of small businesses. We make it possible to live, for people to live car-free by combining the use of Uber, transit agencies like the WTA, bikes and feet. We also provide a safe alternative for many that we believe has a positive impact on DUI rates. Finally, we are a tech company, and our presence here in Bellingham, in what would be one of our smallest communities in the country, would send a clear signal about the type of place Bellingham is and the, to companies and visitors alike. All of this contributes to a safe, accessible community with a vibrant downtown welcoming to all and focused on the future. We'd be thrilled to have the opportunity to serve the people of Bellingham, and we greatly appreciate the work of the council, council and staff to earnestly address this issue. We hope the city adopts a background check framework along the lines of option three or a similar variant that allows us to serve the people of this great city with pride. We are happy to continue to work with staff and to build fair options that are viable for all players in this market. With that, I thank you all for your time, and hope you have a wonderful night.
Thank you, sir. Chris Halterman, Lori Province, and Clarence Holmes.
Chris Halterman, Wackam County. On Friday, and I do want to thank you guys for having this, the opportunity to come up and speak to you publicly. On Friday, I received an email letting me know that there is, the council was having a discussion and considering creating a mandatory sick pay for Bellingham private businesses. And Friday, of course, as many of you know, was an observed holiday, so there wasn't much for me to find out. This morning, I contacted the Federal Department of Labor, and I also contacted the State of Washington Department of Labor and Industries, and I asked both of these entities what law, statute, ordinance, RCW, gives the Bellingham City Council the legal authority to do this. Both entities said, "I cannot find one." So my personal request is that until you can find that, that you please table this issue until you can find the legal authority to actually do it. I've worked and talked with many local businesses, small businesses. I'm not talking about the large businesses. Most of those large businesses, probably 100% of them, already offer sick pay. This is the type of law that affects the people that you say you are promoting, small businesses in this community. Most of those small businesses operate on very small margins, and like it or not, sick pay is considered a benefit, a benefit which the employer provides to their employees. That being said, again, I reiterate, we want to promote more people starting small businesses, providing more jobs, doing things that actually promote more jobs for people, and that to me means that we have to create an environment that is more inviting for people to come to Bellingham and operate their businesses. My family's operated a business here since 1954. It's a small business. It just has part-time jobs, and it is what it is. I would love to be able to pay as much as possible, and we do, but we have very, very small margins. And most of the, I also, during the recession, I backed out, and I started doing my own business. And so I do mobile bookkeeping for very small businesses who operate on very small margins and cannot afford to have their own full-time bookkeeper. So I do that for them. So I'm quite aware of the small margins that most of these businesses are operating on. I don't know how many of you on the council have ever started a private business that does not accept any public funds or grant money, and depends solely upon the market to come to their business to provide or to buy their products or to purchase their services. But those people depend upon you to look out for their interests, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Just for everybody's information, there'll be no vote tonight. This was introductory. It said information only in the packet, so this is just a long journey to more discussion. So just so everybody realizes that. The next three is Lori Province, Clarence Holmes, and Judy, and if I pronounce this wrong, I'm sorry, Ring, Ring, Ringquist?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Lori Province. I live at 2501 West Street, Bellingham, 98225. I'm here tonight to welcome the introduction of the ordinance for paid sick days here in Bellingham. I would like to relate to you a, didn't intend to come this evening, but I decided I would come. Usually when I come, I try to relate something that's personal as a matter of course, so that you have a story to go with your legislation. Unlike the former speaker, I'm not afraid to say that I work for a labor organization that provides me with paid sick days, and I'm very lucky to have them. Three months ago, I was diagnosed with cancer, and I have used those sick days, and I'm very glad to have them. As you know, I'm a 35-year resident of the city of Bellingham, same house, same neighborhood, and I know as well as you all do, the economy here is based on, a lot on retail, a lot on food service, a lot of service economy, unlike the former speaker who didn't say what her business was. But I have to tell you that a community that supports its workers by providing some modicum of small level of, of sick leave has not seemed to impede those cities that have put it in place already, and it's being discussed in cities of a variety of size all around the state. I welcome the fact that the conversation is going to happen here. I hope it's robust. I hope it's thorough, and I hope that people like me who are able to say that they are in the middle class are willing to say, a nickel more per product for fast food, a bit more in the price of a service is something that we're willing to pay in order to have a healthy community. So thank you very much for your attention. I look forward to the ordinance moving forward. I know that you will honestly and fairly debate it and come to a conclusion that you all will make up your own independent minds, because you always have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori. Please hold your applause. Clarence Holmes.
Hello, I'm here, and I'm a member of SEIU 1199 Northwest, and I'm an employee at Peace Health Laboratories at St. Joe's Hospital. A lot of people have already heard, but after 19 months of negotiations, an informational picket, a candlelight vigil, and a one-day strike, we finally come to a contract with Peace Health that invests in frontline care, patient care workers here in Bellingham. It took a powerful and bold action to hold Peace Health accountable to the community that we serve, and we couldn't have done it without the support from all of our families, our friends, and our neighbors. Together, we made sure that Peace Health, health's top priority was patient care. So thank you to all of you, the elected leaders and community members, who have stood there in solidarity with us at our strike rally, and who came out to support us on the picket line when Peace Health locked us out from our jobs during the days that followed. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations. Judy Ringquist? I'm getting there, ain't I? Now, haven't got there yet, but...
I'm Judy Ringquist. I belong to SEIU 1199 Northwest, and I also work at Peace Health in the laboratory. And now that we're done with our contract negotiations, and that's all been settled satisfactorily, now I'm on to other, other projects, and I am supporting the, the referendum or whatever it is to, to give sick days to everybody. I work in the lab, and I see the ups and downs of the flu epidemics whenever they come through. I've recently been, well, within the last few months, I have been trained on how to handle specimens that could be Ebola. I know that these things come, they don't always happen, but big things can happen. And if I, the hospital requires me to have a flu shot every year so that I can prevent passing on the flu to anybody else, and now it's time for everybody, including small businesses, to step up and help us keep the entire community safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Charon, Kristen Duncan, and Linda Allen.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sarah Charon. I'm the political director of UFCW Local 21, the largest private sector union in the state. We represent about 2,000 workers who live in Bellingham, and we feel it's time that Bellingham be added to the long list of cities and states that have adopted a paid sick leave policy. Cities of all sizes, from Newark, New Jersey, to Tacoma, Washington, being the most recent. Spokane is considering it right now, and we'd like to add Bellingham to the list. I have a couple of questions for you tonight. Do we want to be the kind of community here that protects public health? I think the answer is yes. We know that when workers are forced to go to work sick, that this puts the public at risk. I mean, do you really want your neighbors who work at the grocery store deli to be sneezing while they're serving you a sandwich? It's both bad for public health and absolutely undignified. Second question, do we want to be a community where workers have to choose between their sick child or their paycheck for the week? I think the answer is no. We know that income equality is the biggest issue facing our society today, and most of the workers who don't have sick leave are low-wage workers, and disproportionately women, and disproportionately people of color, who can least afford to not get paid for a day of work. Imagine having to make that choice. Maybe you have. We have families in this community who are struggling to make ends meet, and having to make the decision to stay at home and take care of your sick newborn or going to work so you can keep the lights on? I know how devastating this can be to a family. As a mother of a newborn, it is unconscionable that we have to make those decisions. Do we want to be a community that supports our small businesses? Of course we do. That's why we have small businesses as part of our Healthy Bellingham Coalition who support a paid sick leave ordinance. We hear from all places when this, the first gets introduced, that the sky is gonna fall, that small businesses will, will fail. We support our small businesses, but fear are not facts, and the data shows that businesses are able to adjust and support their workers while maintaining their, their businesses. In fact, some studies show that injuries are, if, if you have workers who have paid sick leave, you have lower injury costs and thus lower working, worker compensation costs. Bellingham has a chance to add to the national momentum and join the ranks of cities, big and small, around the country who pass similar ordinances. So my last question is, will you join us? And I hope the answer is yes.
Thank you. Kristen Duncan and Linda Allen, Larry Hildes.
I'm Linda Allen. I live on Samish Way, 98229, and I'll sing my statement. If it was your child, if she was sick and needed you, what would you do? What would you do? If it was your spouse, he was sick and needed you, what would you do? What would you do?
Well, you know what? You can clap for that.
Okay.
She did, she did in a minute forty-eight seconds, so that's... Good job. Okay, here we are now. Linda Allen, Larry Hildes, and Dean Tuckerman.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Kristen Duncan, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on getting paid sick leave passed in Bellingham. I've worked for Macy's for seven years, and I'm here to speak to you about how paid sick leave would have helped me get through my experience as a cancer survivor. In June of last year, my doctor diagnosed me with stage-three cancer. They wanted to perform surgery immediately, followed by intense chemotherapy and radiation treatment. My life was turned upside down. I didn't know where to start. Thankfully, I had a great union representative who helped me navigate the confusing and frustrating process of dealing with human resources to take the time I needed to get better. To make matters worse, after coming back from treatment, I had exhausted all of my FMLA. Let me tell you how Macy's sick pay policy works. We don't have dedicated sick time. To make matters worse, at Macy's, we get a demerit on our attendance anytime we are sick. If you miss a certain amount of time, even with a doctor's note, you can get disciplined, even fired. I knew that I would have ongoing doctor's appointments and treatments, and when I was told by my human resources manager, this shit, she told me that if I was late coming back to work from a medical treatment, I would take a hit on my attendance record and I could be disciplined. I felt she took the human out of human resources. There was nothing in my current law or contract or in Macy's policy that I could use to get the treatment I needed and not face getting fired. No one should have to choose between their personal health and getting their job or their health of their kids and paying the rent. If we had a citywide paid sick leave policy, when I was going through this, this would have meant less time stressing about keeping my job and more time getting healthier. Let's pass paid sick leave so we can have a healthy Bellingham. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Hildes, Dean Tuckerman, and Diane Foster, and the last name I have up here is Joy Gilfson.
Hi, my name is Larry Hildes, P.O. Box 5405, Bellingham. I am a small business owner. In fact, tomorrow I have two Ninth Circuit briefs that are due. My wife is at the print shop dealing with the part of it that's done. I should be at my desk, and I will be when we're done here. But this is important enough that I made it a priority to come out here. I grew up in a union family. My parents are both public school teachers, and I remember the fight that went on for years to get paid sick leave in the 60s and 70s. They came within five minutes of a strike several years in a row, and one of the sticking points was sick leave. And I remember the difference it made when one of my sisters or I was sick and a parent could take that sick leave and stay home, or come home. Or when my mother's parents were dying and she was able to take sick leave to go and take care of them in those last few days and make the arrangements. This is a fundamental human right. If this is the difference, if we're going to repel small businesses because they actually have to pay their employees to stay home when they're sick, then I, then those, I'm sorry, those aren't businesses I want in my community. If that, if that's their priority, then let them go somewhere else. And it's not really mostly about small businesses. It's about Macy's and Target and Walmart and a lot of other very large businesses, many of them non-union, that don't want to pay sick leave because they want to keep the money. And the small businesses that are on that much of a margin are not going to do better if their employees come in because they don't have a choice and get everyone in the office sick. It's better that somebody stays home and gets well. This is a basic, basic human rights issue. You should be able to stay home when you get sick without losing your income, without losing your ability to feed your family, to take care of your kids, to pay your rent. It's just a very simple, basic issue. Doing this sends the message that this is a good community, that we take care of our people, that we want businesses that take care of their own. It doesn't send a message that it's a bad climate for business. It sends a message that it's a good climate for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Dean Tuckerman, Diane Foster, and Joy Gilfson.
Hi. I am surprised that this is even controversial. I mean, it seems so logical. I actually thought, before I heard this, that it already was the law. I thought that. I thought it was passed in the 30s or the 60s or sometime in the past. I mean, it's ridiculous that this is 2015 and we're still talking about sick leave. This is absurd. We need to just pass this, hopefully unanimously, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Diane Foster.
Hi, I'm Diane Foster, 926 Mason Street, Bellingham. And is this audible here?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Great. So, and I'm not going to take up much of your time, but I'm really welcoming at the beginning of this conversation about paid sick leave. I've been a women's health nurse practitioner for 35 years, and I could tell you tons of horror stories about patients who are unable to take a sick leave for themselves or their children. I've had patients in the past with serious infections that I ordered to be on bedrest, and they couldn't take it because of fear of losing their jobs. And this was in very large local businesses. So thank you so much, and I hope we get this passed soon.
Thank you. Joy, can you tell me how you pronounce your last name? I think I'm not pronouncing it right.
It's like Gilfell in the well.
Gilfell in the well? Okay, I'll get that.
Leave the well off. My name is Joy Gilfelen. I'm a, been from Bellingham and Watcom County since the mid-'70s. I'm here to speak on the jail issue. Frankly, I was appalled at the behavior of the Watcom County Executive and the council when I witnessed the rejection of the city council's move to try to bring common sense, realistic conversation to the county council and to the sales tax initiative. Passing a sales tax does not solve the crisis. The crisis is an inhumane jail that we have right now, and we have overcrowding in the jail. That inhumane treatment is caused by mismanagement of assets and money that we have as taxpayers already allocated to the county council. It occurs to me that in the retaliation against the city council to say either take it or leave it and not negotiate and not answer your questions, that the county council or the county executive has just indicated that they are not willing to be responsible for the actions of the way they conduct the contracts. And it occurs to me that the cities actually have made contracts with the county, and the county is now threatening to cancel the contract at the end of the year, if I understand it correctly, if the city does not yield. My concern is with the inhumane treatment of people inside the jail, whether they be staff, inmates, or people who are coming and going. That jail absolutely must be rebuilt, but does it need to be built with a $132.5 million project? Over the next five years, you're going to still have to solve the problem. So what I'm recommending is that you've got four weeks before August 3rd. What if the city council could collaborate with other organizations in the county to host some public hearings to talk about economic alternatives? What if the city council and other organizations in the county could come up with a, let's say, a 1% alternative that would simply fund all kinds of alternative economic solutions that would take people outside of the jail? What if we did a review of the administration and the behaviors that are causing the over-criminalization and the over-incarceration in the jail? What if, between now and September, the community could get behind a collaborative movement to reduce criminalization, to reduce the demand and the flow of inmates into the jail, and we could actually build a collaborative community solution so that the taxpayers have something to vote for rather than something to vote against? We still have to solve the crisis. We are overcrowded. It is inhumane. There is no question about it. We could repair the Division Street property. We could build a small jail across the street for violent offenders. We could build the Restore Life Center or the Restorative Justice Programs. We could change it with will. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy, and thanks to everybody. We will now close the public comment period and go to Public Works, Public Safety. Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had five items before our committee today. I think I'll wait just a minute, let people walk out.
Oh, yeah. Just let you wait, might be a good idea.
Yeah. Our committee had five items before, for us today. The first was a request for noise ordinance for Puget Sound Energy for night work in the 2200 block of James and Iron Street. Public Works is requesting a variance to perform work between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. for a PSE project located in the alley between James Street and Iron Street, 2233 James Street. The proposed scheduled date will be July 16th. The intention is to perform the work at night to alleviate the outages for commercial customers on James Street. The business at 2237 James Street closes at 9:00 p.m. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item was a bid award for NEP phosphorus management, Lake Watcom, bid number This grant-funded, this grant-funded project provides for phosphorus treatment of stormwater associated with areas draining to Huntington Street and Shepherdson Street between East-North Street and Silver Beach Avenue. Work include constructions of porous concrete and combination drainage and treatment facilities. The lowest responsive and responsible bid is $343,528.45 by contractor Oceanside Construction. The engineer's estimate was $328,309.30, so it went a little over the original estimate. But the committee recommended approval of the contract, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Okay. The next item was a budget amendment for the 2015-2016 budget, re-appropriating $1,313,000 for Public Works expenditures. A reappropriation is the inclusion of a balance from the prior year's budget as part of the budget of the subsequent fiscal year. During the 2015 general reappropriation ordinance process, some planned but unencumbered expenditures were inadvertently omitted from the final ordinance language. The proposed ordinance corrects the omission. The ordinance provides expenditures authorities for the C Street Railroad crossing, Central Business District cameras, utility service, the Boulevard Park sewer improvements, the siree building roof replacement, and the City Hall fire panel. Reappropriation of these funds was anticipated with the approval of the 2015-2016 budget and is necessary to not adversely affect ongoing programs and projects and needs. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Moving right along. The staff recommended that we reject all bids and rebid the project known as the Water Quality for Patton Estuary, bid number 23B-2015. The grant-funded project provides for enhanced treatment of stormwater associated with approximately 90 acres of Fairhaven draining to Patton Creek. Work includes construction of drainage structures and facilities within Harris Avenue right away between Sixth Street and Ninth Street, as well as a large treatment facility in the Eighth Street right away between McKenzie Avenue and Harris Avenue. The city received four bids that were publicly opened on June 25, 2015. The lowest bid was submitted by Favor Construction in the sum of $1,046,054.30, including any applicable sales tax. The second lowest bidder, Award Construction, Inc., submitted a bid protest, a copy of which is in our packet. Staff recommended that council reject all bids and rebid the project for the reasons stated in the attached response letter. It is anticipated that the project may still be built in 2015 if we go out for rebids. The committee recommended that we reject all bids and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Moving right along. The staff recommended that we reject all bids and rebid the project known as the Water Quality for Patton Estuary, bid number 23B-2015. The grant-funded project provides for enhanced treatment of stormwater associated with approximately 90 acres of Fairhaven draining to Patton Creek. Work includes construction of drainage structures and facilities within Harris Avenue right away between Sixth Street and Ninth Street, as well as a large treatment facility in the Eighth Street right away between McKenzie Avenue and Harris Avenue. The city received four bids that were publicly opened on June 25, 2015. The lowest bid was submitted by Favor Construction in the sum of $1,046,054.30, including any applicable sales tax. The second lowest bidder, Award Construction, Inc., submitted a bid protest, a copy of which is in our packet. Staff recommended that council reject all bids and rebid the project for the reasons stated in the attached response letter. It is anticipated that the project may still be built in 2015 if we go out for rebids. The committee recommended that we reject all bids and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Okay. The last, I believe, yeah, the last item is an item relating to transportation network companies. Staff presented three options related to the background checks provision in Bellingham Municipal Code 6.54. Staff also discussed other proposed changes to recognize transportation network companies as providers of for higher transportation services, including licensing requirements and vehicle inspection. The committee voted with a split decision, two to one, in favor of the Seattle model. So I'll turn it over to committee.
Okay. Is there pinky?
I just want to ask a question if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I'm just, was listening to the statements made in public comment, and I'm a little uncertain if Uber is willing, is able to function under option number two, or if they were saying that it was not something that they would be able to provide services under.
Go ahead, Brian.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. So they're sitting right behind me, if you'd like to ask those folks directly. That'd be maybe the easiest way.
Usually, we don't do that, but go ahead and come on down, sir, or Anna, if you want to come with him. You're making him go into the den by himself.
Good evening again.
To answer the question, to be viable in a community like this, we have to have the most streamlined process possible, also that is equitable for all the different players. And we think that can be done under option three. It wouldn't be viable under option two. Seattle worked on this project for one year and is still not fully implemented based upon the rigor, based upon the complexity and the amount of staff time that's necessary to throughput more drivers than they ever expected. So it's, we don't consider it a workable solution for either the city or for Uber. And therefore, we would not come to the community under that because it's just not, it's not workable in that way. We can look at hybridized versions of option three and collaborate on that in ways that work for all players, and then that would be possible.
Hey, Pinky, you have a follow-up?
Just quickly, I just did a little bit more research this afternoon. I thought this was clearer to me than it is, but maybe not. And I would like to see this come to our city, but I also want to have it workable and what's right for the citizens of Bellingham. So I'm just worried that if we do go ahead and if the vote is mixed, and if we're to vote two, that would mean that you would not be, you would not be doing business here. Is that what I'm to understand?
Correct. We can look at workable versions of option three, variance of it to take into account concerns, but the Seattle option as it stands wouldn't be workable.
What if we went back to the drawing board a little bit?
There are options there that work. I mean, I think we're, along with everything else, a very good process, but yeah, that's definitely a possibility.
Okay.
Michael.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what I'm hearing. The Vancouver model is bureaucratic. It's multi-layered. It has this private entity, and then it has standards set by the city, then it has an audit function where the city goes in and may audit the company's driver records. Look at the Seattle model number two. The technology involved is a mail and a stamp. All they have to do is take their third-party background check and mail it to the police department. I really don't know why that's a difficult thing to ask. And if you don't want to do your own third-party check, well, the police will do it for you. It just seems like the Seattle model is straightforward, fair. It makes no particular concessions to any particular business model, any particular business. It's just fair and neutral, and it uses the most trusted resource we have, our own police department. It says under two, "We will not maintain a pre-approved vendor list," right? We're not going to set up any special standards. You send us a background check. If it's good, you're good. It just seems really simple and straightforward, so I will be supporting the Seattle model.
Roxanne.
I'm supporting the Vancouver model because I don't think it makes sense for us to duplicate efforts. Uber and other organizations are going to thoroughly vet their background checks through even better services than what we have through our Bellingham Police Department. And it's in their best interest to do that so they can certify their business and keep their business going and keep it viable. At the same time, I'll make the argument that we don't do background checks for other businesses. Why do we single this one out? I mean, healthcare workers, maybe we should take those ones off because they're providing care for community members. And also, I just feel like we still have the ability to set the standards for how we want the business to operate in terms of the types of background checks that we want them to use. I think their list is quite good, and especially in terms of the vehicle inspections and the type of vehicle inspections we'd like to have them do. So we're not giving up our complete authority. And then the ability to audit is also quite simple. We can do that however we wish, and that's also our authority. But to duplicate the services in terms of doing two background checks to assure that somebody clears is, I think, a waste of our municipal time and funding. So I move that we support the Vancouver model.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Motion been made in second. Discussion, Jack. Go ahead.
I guess in response to Roxanne, taxi drivers and for-hire drivers right now are required to go and do background checks under our particular thing. So we are doing it right now. Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't make sense that we're doing it. When they have the ability to do it, they-
But there's a lot of segments in our, in our community where we have the teachers, childcare workers, you know, there's a lot of places where we do have background checks that are required as a condition of employment. And, you know, it's pretty critical. I don't quite understand the hard line that this company is providing in that something as basic as a criminal background check, something that is very important to the community for the health and safety of our community, would be the, you know, for a $35 or a $50 fee per license, that that would be the critical make or break for a company to go and enter into this community. I don't, I don't agree with that premise. I don't, I think that you could operate under any one of these models, and I believe that you would do very well in this community. I really do. And I just simply, I don't know. I just, I don't buy the argument that you'll walk away from Bellingham because we decided not to go with the Vancouver model. I just-
Okay. Let's not get in a titter-tat. We usually don't do that, sir. So we've got a motion on the floor. Let's speak to the motion. Go ahead.
Clarifying question under the Seattle model. From what I understood from today's discussion, the Seattle model, BPD background check was only a state background check. Is that correct? Washington State Patrol background check? And that is the, that's how expansive that background check is? Yes. It doesn't go to a national standard?
Are you talking about, I'm sorry, are you talking about Bellingham's or are you talking about?
The Seattle model that is being proposed is option two.
Yeah, so option number two, when we do a background check at BPD right now, it is city and county. And then there's an option, we do have the ability to go through the Washington State Patrol, and that's an additive fee.
That's the watch report.
That's correct.
Right. So my concern with the Seattle model and reflecting on this this afternoon since the discussion is that that may not go wide enough. So we might have a driver that moves in from a different community with a criminal background that we won't know about. So Mr. Hopkins made some remarks here tonight that indicates that their model is more of an in-depth national background check, that there's a system in place for it. My only issue is though, is the, is what Michael and Jack have brought up in terms of having the third-party, having Uber or whatever hail, car hailing service be the entity that's doing, performing those background checks. I do have an issue with that. I do agree with Councilwoman Delilquist in terms of having our best department do the background checks as BPD. However, if it's only to a state level, I couldn't support the Seattle model.
Okay. Roxanne.
Well, just another food for thought idea. Well, first of all, I want to make it clear, I'm not trying to trivialize background checks. I want to be supportive of the organization that goes to the furthest extent in doing those background checks to be the most protective, and I think the business community will do the job of that. And this would be a tremendous asset to our community if we could attract Uber and other organizations. And so that's why I'm so highly supportive of this in working with this organization to do that, to create jobs, to create consistent rides, to create rides that you can get through your smartphone, through a quick message. They're safe rides. They're good rides. They're reliable. And we need this in our community. And I also want to just offer a food for thought idea. If you're uncomfortable with the regulations as they relate to organizations like Uber and taxi cabs, we would have the option of doing separate regulations for the two entities.
Okay. Jack.
Brian, who's going to do the audit if option three is chosen?
That's a good question. I don't believe that we've gotten that far. We're looking for direction from council before we go down that road. I think from, from an audit perspective, what we'd really be checking, I believe, is the compliance with the background check. It seems a natural fit to put into BPD. They have knowledge and experience in reviewing those today, but again, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
Because I've, you know, I've seen other audit functions that the city's supposed to go and perform, and, you know, some departments do a really good job with it, and some departments really don't do a very good job with some of the audit functions that we are supposed to be doing.
Yeah, you know, I just, I want to make the point again that option number three has less to do with Uber's business model than it does with other providers of for-hire service. And the reason I say that is that, remember that Uber's business model says to even be a driver, you have to complete a background check. So their business model requires that. So that's been our concern from a staff perspective is what do you do about the other for-hire drivers? I'm not saying it's insurmountable, but we can, that's what we'll have to come back with.
Okay. Michael.
Again, the Seattle model says you do your own third-party vendor background check, and then you mail it to the police department. It is the least bureaucratic, the most straightforward, the simplest thing. Instead of our police being required to set up an audit function, all they do is look at the actual criminal report and decide whether or not that it was adequately run or not. It just seems like the least bureaucratic thing. I'm, I guess I'm surprised that the Seattle model isn't the easiest one. If a company like Uber already has a background check, then they're required to stick it in an envelope and mail it. That's really all there is to it.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion is to pick the Vancouver model. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Who voted no? Jack and Michael. Motion carries five to two. So you'll bring back the audit question later. Okay. Thank you, Terry.
End of committee.
Thank you, sir. We will now go to Parks and Recreation. Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Parks and Recreation had two items today. The first was the Lake Patton Golf Course lease modification. So it's unfortunate that golf has taken a downturn nationwide, and this is also affecting our Lake Patton Golf Course. So we were presented with a lease modification that would create the minimum amount needed to fully cover the city's maintenance and operating costs for the golf course. And this lease modification was approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
And the next item was a bid award for Cardatta Trail to Elementary School, bid number 34B-2015. So we had gone out to bid for this project, and we received a protest. And what the Parks and Recreation Committee decided to do was reject the protest and award the bid for this Cardatta Trail to Elementary School to P&amp;P Excavating in the amount of $378,332.85. And I so move that we award the bid to P&amp;P Excavating.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We will now go committee the whole. We had several items. The first item was our annual report from Robin Matthews from Western Washington University. And really cut to the chase, we're charting new territory here, which has been so warm the month of June, July. She's going to come back in a few months to tell us how we're doing, but with the weather the way it is, it's hard to say how we're doing. She hit a lot of highlights. Some were okay, some weren't, but overall, phosphorus continues to be the biggest problem at the lake. And with the weather the way it is now, hopefully, we don't get into major problems before the end of the summer. The water holding up okay, Ted? Ted's nodding yes. Okay. That a point. The second item was pulled for a couple of weeks, adding a conflict of interest clause to city council rules and procedure. The next was establishing a running list system of minor code amendments. This afternoon, we heard from Rick Seppler. Throughout the year, potential clarifying or minor amendments to the zoning code and other development regulations are often identified by planning, community development, staff, applicants, community members, the planning commission, the mayor, city administration, and council. The planning department is proposing a method to record, retain, and consolidate these proposed revisions so that they may be considered collectively once or twice a year. This would be facilitated through the establishment of a running list. A running list allows proposed amendments to be identified, memorialized, and consolidated for timely review. We had a good discussion this afternoon, and there were some suggestions and questions asked by Councilman Weiss and others on how this would work, and Rick will be bringing this back for further discussion. The next item was the Bellingham Payton Sick Leave Discussion. Councilwoman Murphy brought this forward for the first time. She's talked about it before. So we're now on a journey to the Economic Development Committee to meet at a future time and date. We won't be able to do it on the 27th because that is the night we have our big public hearing on the UGA and the population. So we're going to have a lot of people here. So maybe in August, we'll have the first committee meeting on that when that comes forward. So, do you want to say anything else, Roxanne? Okay. The next was a county jail proposal update. We had a robust discussion this afternoon on that. I don't know if we need to say anymore on that tonight. It'll be talked about tomorrow night at the county council meeting, and if you really are desperate, you can watch that Wednesday night. But if you don't want to do that, it is a sad situation, but it's, there's no use going back and forth with it. It's something that we're going to have to live with one way or another, and we'll get an update probably next, next time. We do have minutes from the 15th of June for regular minute, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Does everybody have them?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Does anybody want to repeat any old or new business that we talked about today?
I have some new.
Uh-oh. I shouldn't have said anything. Go ahead, Terry.
It's, you know, it's not, I just wanted to bring up, July 4th, the community lost Dennis Lane, who, Dennis Lane is one of the longest-running proponents of public tele, of public access television and radio. And I just, just wanted to bring it up to the council and stuff that we're really going to miss an important voice in the, in the discussion of community democracy and the importance of dialogue in the community, and so-
We'll start our next meeting with a moment of silence for Dennis because he was heavily involved from day one.
Yes.
Michael. Thanks, Terry.
That's sad news. I reported this afternoon that Terry and I attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Wenatchee.
Rides together?
What?
Did you ride together?
No, I went, I went definitely. But I forgot to mention something. At that, at the, at that meeting, the Governor's Smart Community Awards were presented, and the city of Bellingham receives such an award and for our downtown project, planning project. And the planner in charge of that, Ms. Darby Coles, was able to travel to Wenatchee to receive the award in person. I just thought I should, I forgot to mention that this afternoon. Needs mentioning.
Okay. Anything else under old and new business?
Didn't the mayor have something?
She'll, we'll get to her when she has the mayor's report. I don't know what she's doing down there, but we'll find out. We'll find out when we get the mayor's report. You, oh, you want to say something, Bill? I'm sorry.
Just to follow up on old business.
Sure.
Bill Ripold, Fire Department. And at the last meeting, June 15th, council directed staff to go forward with a process to implement, looking at renaming Indian Street to Billy Frank Junior Street. And we took a look at that, and we estimated that our costs are going to be about $7,000 to our best available to predict that. I think it was reported earlier in the Herald following that last meeting, June 15th, of an estimate of $20,000 to $30,000. That was information that we provided. It was incorrect. We should be somewhere about the $7,000 mark. Just wanted to come back to make sure I understand the direction. Otherwise, tomorrow, we're looking at putting out 225 mailings, certified mail to the affected occupants that are along Indian Street. And understanding council's direction, plan to move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Executive session, then we'll go to the mayor's report. Or you want something under old and new business? What are you doing to him, anyway? Poor guy wants to go home. Leave him alone. Okay. Potential, we had two executive session items. Potential property acquisition, staff provide information on a property acquisition, direction given, no action taken. Litigation, city of Bellingham versus Sang Tye, Watcom Superior Court, staff provide information on litigation matter, direction given, no action taken. Mayor's report. Now she's laughing. Go ahead, Bill. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for Bill before-
Bill, just a minute. Jack's going to ruin your life.
After your report. Oh, okay. I just wanted to see what your, what your overall take was on the response for Saturday's fireworks throughout, throughout Bellingham. And just, you know, what did you think, how it went?
Good segue. Actually, we, I have a Bellingham Police Department report here. But, you know, I think overall, as far as fire activities, I reported to Mayor Kelly. I think fire-wise, we had no significant incidents. We were extremely busy. We had about 65 incidents that we ran for the day, which is a high call volume for Bellingham Fire alone. Our dispatch center was, was really busy, and a lot of those- Our dispatch center was really busy and a lot of those calls were from the public who was just trying to find out what's going on with all the smoke I smell. Should I be concerned? Is something happening in my neighborhood? And it was really effective for Bellingham Fires now on Twitter. And so, we were able to get some information back out to the community as far as what was going on with the fires and that was in conjunction with our emergency manager, Paul Gazdick. But, fire-wise, I think with the messages that were sent out by the executive, the mayor, our ban on fireworks, many things coming together, provided for a relatively safe 4th of July celebration.
That's kind of what I thought too.
And I was laughing because I know this is a BPD report. He had a uniform on and a badge. Thank you. So, I just gave you copies of the police reports rather than just going through them There were more. They didn't get entered into CAD. So, if you'd like, Jack, if you'd like a better accounting, we can have police here next time.
I just wanted your, just to ballpark, did we do well?
I only heard, I only heard from Fire Department. I didn't, so what I'm saying is, I think if it was something out of the ordinary, I would have heard from the chief. So, I'm assuming that is a good thing.
Okay, now, we're going to the mayor's report.
All right. First of all, we have hired John, how soon we forget his name, Hutchins, Hutchins replacement, Renee LaCroix is going to be the, the...
Was it? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Oh, Renee, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, we hired in-house, which is something that we like to do if we have candidates of equal ability. We like to promote from within. So, that was good. We had really good applicants. We were lucky. I think there was a, I think, I could let Ted speak to it, but I think we had, we had good applicants to choose from. So, we'll be happy to work with Renee. She has a lot of information and experience about the natural resource side of what we do at city government and I think that's going to be a plus for us. So, welcome her when you see her. So, she'll be our new Assistant Director, Natural Resources for Public Works. State budget, we did get two large awards in the, in the state transportation budget. It's not complete yet, so I hope I don't jinx it, but $10 million for Bakerview Overpass. And I have to tell you, that's a pretty, that's a pretty quick turnaround and I'm going to compliment our state lawmakers, the ones that we talked to for listening to us about how important it was and for Ted and the lobbying that got done and for our lobbyists that we hired. That was a really, normally, you have to wait a lot, a lot longer to see that kind of an award on a big, major project. So, that was very good. And we also got $10 million for the Orchard Street multimodal improvements.
That's great, too.
So, we were happy about that, too. With the shared, we have, we've had a reduction in...
Oh, before you go any further, can you please send a, we should do it together, a thank you note to the lobbyists. They did a hell of a job down there. Because I talked to a few of them and they said, "Oh, boy, you guys are covered. These guys are doing a great job." So, that's, that's good.
Yeah, they're doing a really good job and I also got a phone call from Senator Curtis King, who's the Republican Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, thanking us on the tour that Ted and staff gave to him. I complimented him on coming up here to see our projects. It's the first time since we had somebody in the district that was a vice-chair of transportation, Georgia Gardner, that I've really seen a transportation chair take interest in kind of our area, our region. And he complimented us on working together with COG to have one list. It makes it very much easier for the, for the legislators to not have to wonder, what is your priority when there's a list that's been agreed to by all the cities? When Rick Larson was in town and this morning, when I talked with Congresswoman Del Bene, they would also appreciate us doing that for federal, not projects, because they don't earmark projects, but for federal monies that would pay for projects that are priorities of ours. They said that would be very helpful if COG could organize a federal, a federal, kind of a priority of funding sources so that they would understand, we need to put more in this pot than that pot because the projects that are coming out of Fourth Corner are paid for by this pot of money. So, I'm going to bring that up at the COG meeting that we're going to be having, I think, this week. Yeah, seems like we haven't had one for a while. So, that was all good news. It's not done yet, though. Revenue sharing, so we have gotten some indication that we're going to have revenue sharing on marijuana, which we had asked for, that was part of our list. We are recovering some of the liquor revenues sharing that we had from before, which is very good and that our MOTCA money was protected. So, I think our representatives down in Olympia did a very good job for us and for the county and the, and the port as well. So, that was, that was all good. And then, the Housing Trust Fund also received additional funding. So, that was a good thing. That's...
Good thing.
That's always on the, kind of the chopping block, but for us, considering the first gentleman that spoke at Public Comment, who I have actually talked to, you know, housing for as well as we're doing, housing and beds, especially for those with mental illness and substance abuse, continue to be a problem. So, that's good.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. Oh, when we met with Congressman Larson, he talked about his rail safety improvements and that type of thing and we all that were sitting around there and said we supported his efforts to obviously look at the at-grade crossing, not at-grade crossing, the separation of streets and rail, which would be very helpful, but it's very expensive and we let him know that other monies would be appreciated too when we're looking at safety zones and other things like that. That isn't what his legislation dealt with. Rental registration. I paid my rental registration fee, so all of you who might have rental register, rental property, sure to register. You have till the end of the month. We got 4,000 hits on the Facebook page based on that, that picture that we put on to help remind people that they're supposed to pay their rental registration. So, I was, I thought that was a good, must have been a good reminder. Rick, is there a running total you have?
Four hundred as of this morning.
So, 400 as of this morning and it's only the sixth. So, we're doing okay so far. And then, finally, Tuesday at 5:00, I think James already invited all of you to the ribbon cutting for the ASP Trail. So, I'm excited about that, too.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Can I come in my sneakers and actually go after the ribbon is cut?
Yes, absolutely. It's open. They might stop you somewhere on that corner over there, but maybe not. There's a chance you won't get stopped. Okay, I have two appointments, a reappointment and appointment. For your information, I am reappointing Stephen Dillon to the CDA Board, Community Development Advisory Board, and I need action and approval on appointing Angela Nelson to the Lake Wachem Watershed Advisory Board.
Move approval of the appointment of Angela Nelson to the Watershed Advisory Board?
Second. Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Bornman. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will now go to consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, wanting none. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
In ordinance amending the 2015, 2016 adopted budget, increasing revenue in the general fund by 5,000 as a result of a Lummy Community Contribution Grant Award to the City of Bellingham Office of Emergency Management and Appropriating Related Expenditures.
Move third and final.
Second. Roll call.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
In ordinance adding a new section, Bellingham Municipal Code 2.24.055 to establish the position of warrant officer at the Bellingham Police Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
In ordinance amending Title 15 and Title 19 of the Bellingham Municipal Code regarding an exemption for impact fees and utility system development charges for low-income housing projects.
Move third and final. Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Yes. That's for Stan, in case he's watching, but he's in bed by now. He's asleep.
In ordinance amending the 2015, 2016 adopted budget, increasing revenue in the Storm and Surface Water Fund by $88,634 as a result of the inter-agency services agreement with the Department of Ecology appropriating $79,182 in related expenditures and placing $9,452,000 in estimated ending undesignedated reserves.
Move third and final. Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.